Any...
The boys coming home from the game.
Forty-nine yards.
Younger son, Sean, is... will be in from Des Moines, but Ryan's still in... he won't be back till...
We'll call this meeting to order in the Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors. Board of Supervisors for November twentieth, two thousand and eighteen. We'll call Mr. Beeter.
Layland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Agsman?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Here, have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions of the day.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agendas proposed or as...
Prove.
Second.
Second, any discussion on that? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All this motion carried, public comments. Anybody from the public like to comment about anything other than what's on the agenda for today? Moving on to claims and payments, is resolution pay the bills for the county?
The county's expenditures this week total two million, seven hundred and eighteen thousand, seventy-five dollars and fifty-eight cents, two, seven, one, eight, zero, seven, five point five, eight. And that includes our payment to the mental health region of two point three million.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion on this item? This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Agsman?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Right? Yes, resolution adopted. This is a resolution at the Board of Supervisors, approve expenditures for Country View Care Facility.
Expenditures for Country View this week total ninety-four thousand, eighteen dollars and forty-seven cents, nine, four, zero, one, eight point four, seven. We're holding two hundred and eighty-one thousand from October benefits to the county, and their bank balance as of yesterday was approximately two hundred and forty thousand.
Move to...
Second.
Move to the second, any discussion on this item? This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Agsman?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is receive project updates from Department Heads and elected officials. Morning, Kathy.
Morning.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. Could I please have the TV screens on? Just a brief update on the road conditions, they're all in good condition. There may be some snow moving in Sunday or Monday of this week. We are, of course, ready for that. We have ample salt on hand. We may be a bit short later in the season. We are looking for more salt. Right now, there seems to be a shortage of it in the Midwest, but we're looking for more of that. But right now, we have a good supply. I wanted to give you an update on the Finchford Road Bridge project. We did open the road last Thursday. I just thought I'd just give you a very brief recap of the bridge project. So if you recall, I did tell you about the bridge earlier before we started construction. It was built in nineteen fifty-nine. It's a large structure, three hundred and fifty feet long. Inspections from two thousand and fifteen and sixteen done by our structural engineer firm. They did show that there was quite a bit of spalling on the underside of the bridge deck, as well as delaminations in the bridge deck itself. So that is where the concrete is separating from the steel rebar. So we did put a set of plans together with our consultant, and we also wanted to rehabilitate the deck, but we also wanted to make the bridge be able to carry more heavier loads. It carries legal loads, but it cannot carry oversized overweight legal loads. And there's a distinction there. So in order to allow it to carry heavier loads, we needed to stiffen the beams. So we had some steel plates on the underside of some of the beams. So that was part of this contract as well. It was awarded to Kramer Associates, a very large bridge contractor out of the Des Moines area for approximately nine hundred thousand dollars. And they began work in mid-July, and this was per Department of Transportation specifications. We had to wait for any nesting birds to be done nesting, and then construction could begin. Just a few photos of the demolition. The contractor basically sawed the deck into squares and then lifted them out, jackhammered out above the beams, and then lifted them out with a crane. And then they will go back, and in the spring, most likely, there are still a few pieces of rebar. We want to make sure that all the rebar is taken out of the river in case there are boaters or tubers, people on the river. That is still a remaining item of work is to clean up the steel, any steel that may have fallen into the river. Then about six weeks later, the contractor had done all the removal, and then it was time to place the new deck. And that's where you can see all of the green steel here, epoxy coated rebar that is supposed to be... that is more resistant to salt and those corrosion on steel. This is a photo of the finished deck and also the new guardrail. And then the next step in the process was to work on those beams on the underside of the bridge. You can see over here that this beam was sandblasted, and then the next step in the process was to encase the underside of the bridge because there was lead paint, a minimal amount of lead paint on the bridge beams. So the entire underside was encased, and then it was repainted. And here's another shot of that enclosure. This is another shot of the finished deck. And now some of the last remaining items of work were to work on the approaches, to pour these panels, and then to repour some concrete here so that the guardrail could be affixed to it. This is a finished photo of the structure as it looks today. And then one of the last remaining items of work last week was to install these crash cushions. These are compliant, the latest technology in crash cushions and guardrail and treatments. And these were installed on Thursday, and on Friday or Saturday, the first one got hit. So we are due to the slippery conditions, most likely. We are working to... looking for traffic accident reports to see if we are able to recover anything from the person who hit the guardrail there. Again, I just wanted to mention the bearings. So this is a before picture of the bearings, and these were on the south side where the worst condition of the bearings were just due to years of, most likely, an improperly sealed joint. Salt water had dripped down on top of the bearings. You can see that there's quite a bit of corrosion. These did have to be sandblasted along with the beams that I was telling you about. And you can see how this... Once they were sandblasted, the diameter of that bolt is much smaller than it originally was. Those were then struck to test their structural integrity, and six of the eight busted off. And that was where our concern was. So last week, our structural consultant said that it was okay to open the bridge to traffic, so we did that on Thursday. But we need to repair those bearings as soon as possible. Kramer is still looking for some contractor who can possibly drill out those bolts and place new bolts, epoxy new bolts, in those bearings and then retighten them. Or perhaps a bracket can be made to fasten down over the bridge bearings. So we are trying to get that done as soon as possible, hopefully yet this year, and we'll still leave the contract open so that that work can be done. And then, of course, we need to pick up... The contractor needs to come back and pick up the steel in the river, probably in the spring. So can I answer any questions on the bridge project at this time?
So the engineer approved opening the bridge with...
Yes, they... We expressed our desire to, you know, get the bridge open as soon as possible, if that was a safe alternative, and they did say yes. It's safe to open, but you should repair those as soon as you can, as possible.
You mentioned too changing the load limit on that bridge, from what it was previously to now?
So what... By strengthening the beams, we'll be able to carry... Occasionally, we have large oversized overweight loads that are permitted, so up to one hundred and twenty thousand pounds, for example. Those could now go over this bridge with a permit. Prior to this, we only allowed eighty thousand pounds just because the beams were not designed to carry those heavy loads. So we essentially made the beam deeper by adding more metal to the bottom of it, and that stiffens it and allows the beams to carry more of a load. There would still be legal loads if...
Most of these agricultural related?
Not necessarily. It could be large pieces of machinery, equipment. Sometimes we'll get tractors or cranes moving over the bridges, moving throughout the county. So it just depends. We get a lot of various oversized overweight loads throughout the year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, any other Department head elected official? Moving on to minutes approved for November thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
Move to the second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Have a hearing, bid opening, propose lease agreements for use of one or more county-owned flood damage taken loss. That'll be at the end of the... Once we get through all the rest of the agenda. Consent agenda by resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Move the second, any discussion on any of the items? This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Agsman?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Going to move the contract and agreement resolution to the end of the meeting, too. Other business motion at the travel request be approved and direct to chair to sign for same, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eight cents for Dan Tronka to a ten, two thousand and nineteen, Isaac School, January sixteenth and seventeenth in Des Moines, Iowa.
So moved.
Second.
Move the second, any discussion on this item? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. This resolution at the suspension requested by Douglas Bus on taxes owed for eighteen, nineteen installments in the amount of one thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars be approved pursuant to four twenty-seven point eight of the code of Iowa and the county treasurer be authorized and directed to adjust your records accordingly.
Second.
Move to the second, any discussion on this item? This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Agsman?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, the resolution at the suspension requested by Judy L. Langham on taxes owed for eighteen and nineteen installments in the amount of nine hundred and two dollars be approved pursuant to four twenty-seven point eight. Treasury to authorize and direct to adjust your records accordingly.
So moved.
Second.
Move to the second, discussion on this item? This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Agsman?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, this is a resolution at the final project cost for the jail parking lot construction in the amount of seven hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and three dollars and twenty-two cents, which includes additional contractor professional services, be approved and direct to chair to sign for same as recommended by Rory Givin, maintenance superintendent.
So moved.
Second.
Morning, Mr. Givin.
Good morning, Board. Rory Givin, maintenance superintendent. First of all, I want to point out, there is a mistake in the dollar amount that we presented to the agenda, and the actual amount, or correct amount, is seven hundred and seventy-two, eight, ninety-three point twenty-two. We had indicated originally seven, seventy-two, eight, oh, three, twenty-two. So that correction again is seven, seventy-two, eight, ninety-three, eight, twenty-two. Wanted to give the Board a breakdown of this project. The Board is aware that throughout this project, we've had some additional costs. One of the additional costs that was outlined was the replacement of a sanitary sewer line. This was the... One of two main lines coming out of the jail. Discovered that this line needed to be replaced. So we had a total cost for that section of thirty-six thousand, seventy-five dollars and ten cents. Just to go down through the list, another additional area that was discovered during this project was undermining underneath the loading dock area. So we decided that to go ahead and address that issue as well, which basically involved removing the concrete on both dock approaches to the building. That total cost was additional was twenty-nine thousand, eight, twenty-four, and four cents. With the parking lot project in general, the excavation, we originally had assumed going eight foot down. We actually had to take that another four feet beyond that. So that additional Class thirteen, which was the special class material, that was an additional seventy-four thousand, one hundred dollars. There was also a pretty sizable footing that was encountered. That was an additional fifteen thousand... or fifteen hundred and thirty-five. So the total for the parking lot, just looking at the parking lot, taking out the loading dock and the sanitary sewer, which wasn't originally identified in this project, was ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy-five cents. Total project cost, again, seven hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three dollars and twenty-two cents.
Would we have Susan budgeted?
Well, we had budgeted seven hundred. And when we issued the bonds, we did a... Not to exceed seven fifty. But we do have enough in the bond proceeds. If you recall, we shifted part of the courthouse remodel, ceiling and lighting project to the two thousand and fifteen bond issuance because we had some excess funds there. So with this remaining amount in the parking lot, the other project that we have in the two thousand and seventeen bond proceeds is the Pine Crest restroom that's being in progress right now. But in discussions with Rory, he expects that to be, you know, either on budget or below budget. So with that, we are still projecting to have about eighty thousand in remaining proceeds on that bond issuance.
Rory, did we have any change orders on any of these?
What I listed, we had the sanitary sewer, the loading dock additional cost, and that additional for the Class thirteen grouped under change orders for the project.
And you kind of brought those to us as they came due, unfortunately.
Right.
You said the total of those was ninety-one thousand, approximately.
So going back to that, just looking at the parking lot without the loading dock and the sanitary sewer, we had the additional fill that had to be removed, and then additional fill put back in place. The footing removal, and then the consultant fee totaled ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy-five cents. And then obviously, we had the loading dock, which was an additional twenty-nine thousand, eight, twenty-four, oh, four, and then the sanitary sewer at thirty-six, seventy-five, ten.
So the parking lot project actually came in under budget?
If you take out the loading dock and the sanitary sewer, and the... That leaves us with seven, thirty-six, eight, eighteen, so...
Okay, thank you.
That's the break.
Then we went down four feet farther than we were going to. Yeah. That added cost.
That was the big reason for that large amount of seventy-four thousand, one hundred dollars had to be treated as Class thirteen contaminated.
I think the really good thing for the public to be aware of, this is a good lesson in how shortcuts taken initially when this parking lot was constructed. I think there were about thirty thousand dollars. We could have excavated the whole thing at that time.
Yeah.
All these years later, cost us much more money. And so that's why we don't like to cut shortcuts, or make shortcuts.
Time will tell if this does it.
One thing we can assure is that there's no longer any material left in this area.
Yeah.
But if Mother Nature decides to develop a trench under that, that's out of our control. I will mention, you know, with the consultant services that we had on site every day during construction, they did compaction density testing throughout the whole project. So all the fill that went back into place had to meet certain specs. In fact, there were a few times where the material had gotten denied. It didn't meet the specs, and so the contractor would then have to bring in the... Make corrections to that. So I will say that, you know, the checks and balances were there to make sure...
Layland, you'd like what days?
We actually ended up with approximately two and a half days over. But looking at the project in whole, we had a pretty large suspension of time during the design phase for the ramp construction and also the sanitary sewer, which put an undue hardship on the subcontractors who've already had their time slotted to lay the concrete. So in looking at that, with such a small amount of time, that we decided that to go ahead and just absorb that into the project because, again, there was estimates as to how long it was going to take to do the sanitary sewer. There's a lot of unknowns in the project. So ultimately, ending up at two days, we felt that was a pretty good accomplishment considering all the unknowns that we did run into through this project. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Givin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Agsman?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, the resolution at the taxes on submitted properties which have come into public ownership through community development efforts, public infrastructure improvement of public purpose acquisition or abated into a strike the county treasurer to adjust your records accordingly.
Second.
Four twenty-seven point two, the code of Iowa, total amount, eleven hundred and seventy-two dollars. Move to the second, any discussion on this item? This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Agsman?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
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 Resolution adopted.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, the resolution at the county auditorium and is hereby authorized and directed to advance funds in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars from the general fund to the Country View Care Facility.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this item?
Susan, can you give us an overview?
Yes, so...
Necessity to place this five hundred thousand in there?
Right. As I mentioned yesterday, in checking the cash balance of Country View, they had approximately two hundred and forty thousand. We have payroll at the end of this week or tomorrow, and that should be close to three hundred thousand. So they will not have enough if we don't transfer funds. We're going to treat this one, last year, when we did our transfer of a total of one point five million, because we did not anticipate Country View being able to pay the county back, it was recorded as an expense on the county books and a revenue item, other revenue item on Country View. In anticipation of closing, or having the transaction for the sale of Country View at the end of December, we're going to treat this as an advance from an accounting standpoint. We will advance some of the funds. And when we do the closing journal entry to close everything out, I anticipate that we will be able to, you know, put that money back into the general fund because the receivables and the cash that Country View has at the end of December or upon the closing should be sufficient to cover the liabilities that will exist at that time.
Do you think that those cash on hands will be less than the five hundred thousand?
I don't know if the cash on hand, from an accounting standpoint, it should come out on the positive side that we can cover those liabilities.
Up to the five hundred thousand?
Well, I mean, we'll have to wait for those receivables to come in. And then depending on, you know, how everything... When we pay everything out upon closing, all of our fees and everything. But I do anticipate that in the end, we'll be on the positive side and be able to pay the county both the benefits that we're holding, you know, and the advance that we're going to give them right now.
Any other questions, Schwartz? This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Agsman?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a nine oh five hearing opening on the proposed lease agreements for December eighteenth to October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty, for the use of one or more country... County-owned flood damage taken lots. Motion to re-please receive and place on file proof of publication.
Second.
Move to the second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Motion to close the hearing after oral written comments are received. Any written comments?
No, sir.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Bids to be received, open in red. Bid deadline was four o'clock yesterday, two thousand and eighteen. Morning, Dana.
Thank you.
They all make the deadline. Thank you. Some big bids.
Thanks, Dana.
Thanks.
Okay, so this bid is for the property formerly known as fifty-four oh seven Wyden Road by Mark Mangridge in the amount of twenty-six dollars and one cent. This bid is for the property formerly known as seventy-nine oh nine Finchford Road in Jamesville. This is from Michael Rup in the amount of fifty dollars.
What was that name again, please?
Michael Rup.
How do you spell that?
R U P E.
Thank you.
And then the last bid is for the same property formerly known as seventy-nine oh nine Finchford Road in Jamesville by Buddy Blanford, and that's for twenty-one dollars.
And these will expire on the same time or other ones are that are out there?
October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty, with the rest of the lease agreements that we did last year.
Make a motion, place on file.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All this motion carried.
Dana, on these other properties, do they currently under contract? So all of these product... Project... Properties, excuse me, are the responsibility of the county to maintain?
Yep.
And there are some individuals that requested perhaps a longer contract period. We're doing three years, and I think that goes back to what we do with most of our contracts being three years. Checking with the state. We could extend these contracts to a longer period of time if we chose to.
When are they out?
December, or I'm sorry, October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty.
Thank you, Dana. Moving back to contracts and agreements. We have a resolution at the amendment to the agreement between Black Hawk County and Pretoc Capital LLC for the conveyance of Country View Care Facility be approved to include as deposit by the seller the amount of four hundred thousand dollars into escrow account to be used by the buyer for capital expenditures.
Second.
Move to the second. Morning.
Morning, thanks for enabling that for me and letting me get here. In doing their due diligence, Pretoc found various deficiencies within the facility that they noted and wanted to negotiate a reduction... that they noted and wanted to negotiate a reduction in the price on. Susan and the brokers talked with them regarding that and let them know that if they were going to be making investments in the facility, we would like to see, rather than a reduction in price, have those funds set aside in escrow so that we know that the facility would be improved and that what is left for the residents and the staff there would be an improved facility. And so that was negotiated, rather than a price reduction, setting aside an escrow of this amount that would be used for improvements to the facility. I, you know, as far as maintenance and what has been budgeted over the years, you know, I don't know, and that, I mean, that's an internal issue, but.
Were there items identified?
As to how that is all going to be spent?
Yes.
They have not indicated exactly how that money will be spent. We will have to work out the escrow agreement, but it would only be for capital expenditures on that facility.
Any other questions? This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Schwartz?
No.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Axeman?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Any other business come before us today? Can I take on the motion for his move?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
We are, Jerry.